Good evening, everyone. Okay. Call a meeting together for December 7th. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick announcement. Kim is not with us this evening. She's ill. Hopefully, she'll be returning quickly so and she gets back on men. Warrant and bills have been signed.
Yep.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second? All in favor? Okay. Skip over the minutes. We'll take those up at our next meeting. Jennifer, your weekly update.
Just a few things. First, just to let you know that you received a letter from the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association thanking you for the $1,000 donation that was appropriated at town meeting. They talk about how much they rely on the donation and how much they appreciate that. So, they thank you. Next is the monthly report for November for the contract deputy. The first one is notable events. There was some stolen property investigation. This is someone that had allegedly removed several propane tanks from Apple Valley Campground in Acton. We did have a 44-year-old individual in town admit to it. So, they're still investigating that. Next is an arson investigation. They're looking at possible arson on Goding Road of the Acton-Lebanon Line. They've got a witness that they were looking for based on some notations from pedestrians. There was a domestic disturbance on Orchard Road. And then, in Shapley, deputies were dispatched to several calls of a male walking around Newfield Road in Shapley, wearing nothing but boxing shorts, no shoes, no shirt. So, they've been unable to locate him, but they didn't go looking. And the last was a theft of two Husqvarna chainsaws on a home on New Bridge Road. And as of now, they haven't located it.
That's serious. Okay.
So, that's that. Yep. So, I just wanted to recap the training that we had today because I think that it's important to go on record. So, as you know, we were closed. I thought that it was a very productive training. We spent an hour on harassment prevention for Maine employees. It covered all types of harassment, including sexual harassment. We went over the personnel policy. You guys made some changes to it last week. So, we went through it paragraph by paragraph to make sure that the employees understood it. They signed acknowledgements of that. We had a safety orientation class that took about an hour. We did a class on dealing with difficult customers, stress management, and providing service with a heart. It was...
Providing service what?
With a heart.
Oh, okay.
Some of the recommended ones from our insurance. And then, the afternoon was spent with an individual from Maine Municipal Trust Health Insurance. She went over the three plans that you offer. She broke it down line by line, and it was very informative. And then, she talked about the life insurance as well. So, we started at 9:00, and we didn't finish until just about 3:30. So, it was good timing. So...
That's great.
But I thought it was good training. Robin was there. So, I thought it went well. So...
When will people have to make the decision on health care?
We put... The deadline from her is December 31st, but we... Kelly and I put a deadline of December 16th.
Okay.
Because we've got to have time to make sure the paperwork's in order and get it up to them. So, December 16th.
Okay.
So, that was that. The personnel policy, which you guys signed last week, does talk about holidays, and the Christmas holiday is listed in there. However, a conversation that the transfer station superintendent and I had, Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday. And the question is, now, it's not listed in there as a paid holiday, but the question is, how many people are going to go to the transfer station? Now, we know the day after Christmas is the busiest day of the year, so we're not even having that conversation. But we're wondering if Robin can come up and talk to you about Christmas Eve and what your thoughts are with the transfer station being open?
Okay. So, he'll...
Yep.
You're going to come up later?
Yeah, I'll come up under department. So...
Can you describe what our time off or holiday is currently around?
Yep. So, the way that it reads now... Yep. The only... It is just Christmas and New Year's Day, I believe. Let me just pull it up to make sure. While I'm pulling it up, we'll jump back to... Oh, no, I got it. Sorry. Yep. Christmas and then New Year's Day.
So, the eve days have never been a day off?
Yeah. And I don't think that New Year's Eve is really a conversation. People don't seem to mind working New Year's Eve, especially during the day. You know, most people don't want... But it's Christmas Eve.
No, I understand that. But we've never... Have we ever done anything on Christmas Eve?
Well, every year, it depends on how it falls. It always depends on how it falls.
Let's say it's a weekday. Would we got a practice of doing that? Or...
If it's on a Saturday, we do a half-day on Friday or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, from the town hall point, I expect that we'll work all week right through Friday. You know? But if Christmas Eve fell on a Friday, we would probably ask you to close.
Okay. So, that's been a practice?
It has. I mean, it has been practice. Right.
Stated day off?
People travel and everything.
You know...
We can discuss that. Okay.
I mean, just a thought. So... And then, the other one was, I spoke with one of the selectmen, I don't recall, regarding committee appointment. So, there was the thought of bringing it to you for a full discussion. As we have people that are interested in committees, joining committees, you know, normally, if it's a warm body, we sign them up and we pass the appointment along. I think that some things have, you know, maybe told us there might be another way to do that. And the thought is, maybe the liaison, so it's not a posted public meeting, could meet with this person in advance. So, we're just looking for your thoughts on it. Because I do have somebody that's interested in a committee, but...
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a great idea that we ought to at least meet who they are. So, we know they've got good intentions and, you know, they're up for the task. We don't want to put people on and have them just get done because they didn't know what it was all about.
Right.
So, I think it's... I think it'd be a good thing.
What do you think about just the liaison meeting with them rather than the full board? So, we don't have a posted meeting or... I mean, it...
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it's not something you're going to do in executive session. And it would be uncomfortable for an individual to meet with a whole committee.
Yeah. It would struggle to meet the...
So, I mean, I guess the liaison might be the thing to do.
Okay. All right. So, I'll reach out to the appropriate one and get that scheduled. All right. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Department head, committee chair updates? Robin?
Robin, superintendent. We were discussing, after we discussed it earlier for the four of us, we wouldn't mind staying open until midnight, give everybody that... I mean, midnight. Noon time?
I forget that.
To let everybody have that opportunity to come in the morning, then have the afternoon off so we could go do what we need to do with our families.
Yeah. So, everybody's on board then?
Yes. Yep.
I mean, that's what a lot of companies do that work every time.
Yeah.
Yeah. When she mentioned it... We mentioned it before. I want to discuss it again with my employees, make sure they were all on board after Jennifer mentioned it this afternoon. And yes, they were all on board to stay open until midnight... Noon time.
We got to be sure if we do this, so we post it, to make sure everybody's on board with this.
The other... Today's closure was posted, just so you know. Today's closure has been posted.
I know. I'm just throwing it out there.
It was on Facebook today.
Did you have a sign by your gate?
I did have a sign at the recycling. I did have it at the compactor.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah. And I didn't have it on the sign, I mean, on the gate today.
And I did post it on Facebook, and it's my own fault for not turning the comments off. But I just want to... And I'm going to reply because that's who I am. But just for anybody that's wondering, we don't do these closures on non-working days because we cannot force employees to come in on a day they're not scheduled to work. So, Robin will use him because he's standing in front of me. He could have plans every Tuesday in his life. He could have another job. This is a part-time job for most of these people.
Correct.
A couple of my staff members work elsewhere. We cannot force them to come in on a day we're closed. And if it's mandatory training or training that's going to keep your taxes down by meeting Maine Municipal's requirements, they make recommendations to us. You know, you want to get a couple more points off your worker's comp? Take this training class. You want to do this? There are things that help those rates, in addition to no claims, that we can do. So, you know, we're not looking to inconvenience anybody. It's just, it has to be done. It's in the town's best interest. We picked a Wednesday in the middle of the week. It wasn't a holiday. We can't force them to come in on a day they're not scheduled. So, to everybody that posted that comment, that is one.
Well, there was an email that was sent.
Well, there was today, there was comments from other people.
I'm sure there. But before we even did the closure, we had an email from an individual, which I don't believe grasped the whole what was going on with the training. I think he thought it was just something else. And then, after it was explained, he came back and still disagreed. You know, we're not trying to inconvenience anybody here, but we do need this training. I mean, we've had personnel issues that we've had to deal with. When you see us going into executive session, there's a reason why we do that, and we want to do less of them.
Correct.
There are things going on that we cannot share with you about pending, you know, when...
And so, we put everybody through this training. Not everybody. I do believe that we should have had some other people in that, but we'll go there later. But no, it was a good thing. Shutting the transfer station down for one day...
And the town hall.
And the town hall. For one day to do that training, really, to, you know, inconvenience. Yeah, just, we've got to deal with it. It's no different than if it was a snowstorm, we shut it down. You know, what's going to happen? You know, it just...
Well, we don't have the budget for it either. Right?
Right. For the extra days, you would have to pay them, yeah.
So, if there's a strong desire that we do something different, we'd have to figure out what to do with it.
It was a good reason.
Yeah. And the staff was here. I mean, they probably worked more than the six hours... What do you normally open, six hours today? They probably, you know, we may see more time put in because we might have been here more than six hours. So...
I'm going to show my ignorance, but is the fire department staffed on the weekend? And what will happen to them on Saturday?
So, they're going to be staffed, and they're going to... Their policy allows, they're going to get double time. They're going to be covered anyways. They'll sign...
They'll be working?
They will be working.
I see. Okay. And there are no other departments that are involved in this?
So, you're looking at work till noon time to shut down? That's your recommendation?
Correct. That is our recommendation. Correct.
I'm good with that, as long as...
And that helps out the townspeople. It helps out us and everything. Yep.
You can put a sign up.
Yep. I will. And I'll put one out on the...
Three weeks in advance.
Yeah. I'll put it up tomorrow when I go up to do some handyman work up there.
Nice. I think it's very reasonable.
I'll post it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other reports?
No.
You meant other departments.
Unless you had something, Robin?
I have your trailer on there for a little later.
What's that, Dennis? That's it? Okay. Liaison updates?
We haven't much of anything going on.
No, there hasn't been much. I'm meeting with the fire department next Wednesday. Warrant and finance meeting coming up. It was the 13th?
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday? Okay. And I've had a chance to talk to Dennis and give him a heads up about what we're trying to do for that meeting.
We are working diligently to get as much as we can.
Yeah. We've made a lot of progress. So, I think we'll get you much of what you're looking for, and we'll talk to you about the one item having to do with salary survey. It's not clear how to do that, but you guys may have some ideas. We'd love to hear them.
And we can always, you know, have the laptop presented and go through what they actually offer because I think there may be some misconception on what the Maine Municipal Survey is currently. They've outsourced it and what it looks like. So, we can happily, you know, go through it in the meeting too to show you.
Okay. David?
Okay. Roads and road committee, I don't have any update on that. Code enforcement, I do. We have... Our new land use assistant has started.
Yeah.
So far, it's all good.
Yeah.
And I don't have any... The soil conservation and forest committee, we have a meeting on Monday.
Very good.
So, we're going to be going over the job description and all that with the rest of the committee.
Good. Okay. All business. Transfer station, trailer, and box purchase. Robin, we're going to hold on that for a little bit. We want to make sure that we've got the resources to pay for this. And so, we're going through our budget work now. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get back to that once we've confirmed that we have available budget. Okay?
I have one question.
Sure.
I have no problem with that. Can I get the wheels cut off the other trailer?
Yeah. Remember, I already told you that, that they approved the $800. You said that Mr. Langley was going to pay.
Right.
Yep. And I'm still waiting for a bill from the mowing.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Perfect. Okay.
Get all those together, and we'll know if we have enough money.
Yes. Facility assessment, RFP. Jennifer, you handed those out at our last meeting. I've had a chance to skim it. And I think, David, you're probably the same. So, we need to go through that in more detail. There was quite a difference between the two, and we need to understand, you know...
Big price difference.
A big price difference. Exactly what those differences mean to us. And we'll... By next week, I'll be ready. And I'm sure David will as well. Civil engineering, RFP. You handed one out at our last meeting. We've had a... David, you've had a chance to look at it?
Yep.
I have as well. Did you have any comments, David?
Well, everything looks good. Just, I think we've... When we're looking it over, you know, the billing and the references at the bottom, we're going to add that to it, correct?
So, you're looking for references? You want them to include references in their RFP?
Yeah. You know, some sort of billing, you know, how they prefer doing their billing to us, you know, hourly job, you know, whatever. Myself, I think the way we're setting this up, I think this should be an hourly project-type deal because other than that, we would have to bid it out every time if it was a one-lump sum.
Right. And it'll be difficult for us to compare companies if they're not doing...
I was going to say, I think the only way you can compare the proposals is to have an hourly billing rate. They may have different billing rates for like a principal versus an associate. I don't know how these...
Well, I would think...
They should detail that.
Yeah. And of course, with some references of where they've worked, what they've done. And I think that's all we have to add to that. And next week, we can move on.
So, shall I just add that? If you've read everything else, I just add that and go ahead and get it advertised?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
How much time? I didn't notice how much time.
Well, yeah. The last line, it says December 28th, but I guess, I mean, with the holidays, you feel like that's...
I would go like January 15th or something like that. Because you've got a whole week and a half of holidays and all that.
So, I'll do January. So, all right. I'm going to go with the 11th. That way, we can look at it that night, if that's okay?
Yep. I just throw the number out there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Take care of that.
You want to make a motion to approve this as change?
With the adjustments? Yeah.
I'll second. Was that a motion? I assumed it was.
Yeah. Close enough.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay. Very good. New business. York County Sheriff Letter Deputy Contract. I understand this was posted on the website. So, if anyone wants to read through the gory details, they're welcome to. David, this was really something you've been handling?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, I kind of brought this up last week there that we had a lot of concerns with the contract. We brought in Shapley that way there. Obviously, they're paying half it. We're paying half of it. We wanted to make sure that they had, if they had the same concerns that we did, and they did. And so, you know, between two meetings that we had, and the last one was like a week and a half ago or so. And the first one was, we put together the concerns. We had the lawyers look at it and write up some stuff for us. We sent the contract to the York County manager, or whatever you want to call him, Greg. And then, we kind of had to fight tooth and nail to get it back. And when we got it back, everything that we put in as changes, they completely deleted and went back to their original. And like I stated last week, there was just small stuff there that... I mean, we weren't asking for major stuff. We were looking for something there that would protect us a little bit because I feel that, and I know everybody's in a, you know, having problems getting help and people leaving and promotions and all that. But myself, I think our board and the board over at Shapley felt that, you know, there should be some sort of fallback. When we lose our deputy, our town of Acton wants this deputy. They vote this in every year. The price keeps going up, and they still want him. We want to make sure we're going to get provided our deputy. And so, in our contract, we kind of, you know, put some stuff in there to, you know, make sure that we were covered, and they deleted everything. So... But at the end of the day, when we met with Shapley, you know, they... The contract, we wanted a two-year...
Three.
A three. I'm sorry. They ended up giving us a one-year. And so, which was kind of odd because, you know, myself, being a businessman, I'd rather have a three-year than a one-year. You know? Even if the three-year escalation clause were increasing price, you could do that. But they didn't even want to do that with us. So, it kind of puts us in a really odd situation here. So... But we did all agree that, at the end of the day, the best thing to do is to sign this contract. And then, we're going to have to look... We may have to look at some sort of alternative. And what that is, we don't know yet. But a couple of us from... One from Shapley, and I think it's myself. I think we've... We're going to talk... We're going to communicate with some other towns that have deputies, contract deputies, and see how they're dealing with it. And we're going to try to come up with some ideas.
And I think the meeting ended by, with the instruction of both boards to draft a letter that would have joined the contract. So, Shapley did sign it. Michelle drove it over today. I sent it to an email. But for the public, it says, "Dear Sheriff King and Greg Zinser, the purpose of this letter is to express the select board's displeasure regarding this contract. The boards have struggled with York County's refusal to consider any of our proposed changes, which we believe were reasonable requests. Both towns worked diligently on our recommendations and were discouraged that none of the requested changes were even considered. With that being said, please know that we have decided to move forward with the one-year contract you have presented, but we'll be researching other avenues regarding any additional law enforcement service for Shapley and Acton for the consideration in the future. In close, please find a signed copy of the law enforcement services for Shapley and Acton." And then, we're going to send that to them and all the county commissioners.
So, there's a letter and...
Yep. The letter to sign.
And a contract?
The actual contract. I'm just going to give you the last page.
That's fine. Yeah, I've seen it. Make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion. We sign the one-year contract with York County Sheriff's Department for the contract deputy.
All right. I'll second it. Let's open it up for public comment.
Ray Loebz, I guess my question is, the sheriff's department will still provide services even before, if we didn't have a contract?
Go ahead.
I mean, they get a phone call, it would come out.
Your county taxes cover it.
Right. So, being that the people of Acton wanted this type of situation, and they are unwilling to budge, perhaps that's something that can be brought up, that we do get the service anyway. So, why are we paying for something where we don't have the protection that you're talking about here, David? And, you know, even if there are small changes in that, perhaps something that might be presented to the public is, you know, do you really...
One thing that we'd added into the contract was that if, say, there was a promotion done like there was on the last one, that there would be somebody equivalent to come in and serve in that role. Okay? You know, to step into the role of our contract deputy. And there was nothing that was gone. So, it really left us in the same situation we were in before as if they give a promotion or somebody quits, then we could be three, four, or five months of interviews and hoping that somebody may fill this position. So... Which is kind of discouraging. So, I think that, in the gist of it all, is... And there were some people in the selectmen in Shapley, a couple of them, I... We were all on kind of the same page was, you know, we are paying our county tax. We do... And we're paying the extra for this deputy, okay? Which is, you know, really a bonus for them and us at the same time. But they're not... Like the one-year contract, why only one year? There's... We believe there's a reason. They may not even be doing this next year. Okay? They're not giving us a... Whether or not this is going to be something they're going to continue doing, they're talking about changing the program up. So, we don't even know what we could be walking into next year.
So, on the last one where there was a promotion and we were without the deputy, So, but, on the last one where there was a promotion and we were without the deputy, did the people of Acton had to continue paying?
No.
Or we did not have to pay that? So if something like that were to happen, then payments stopped to the sheriff's program?
I don't think the, that's, I don't think the money's the issue here.
I do, because, I mean, I, I don't see paying for a service we're not getting.
We weren't paying for them.
It was prorated.
It's prorated. We're not paying for, but what I'm saying is, I don't believe the money's the issue.
Okay.
The whole idea of hiring this contract deputy, okay, is the town of Acton people feel that they're safer because of that, and we're paying for a service that we want. If they're not providing the service, and they won't give us any assurances that this service is gonna be provided, then it kind of leaves us up in the air. And, and, you know, and I, when I spoke to the county manager and the sheriff during our little round-the-table thing, you know, I'm like, well, you have all these contract deputies, you know, Waterboro, Parsons Field, all over the place, okay? And when you say you've got five, six, seven of them, I think it's more than that, and you don't have a floater? So when someone takes a vacation, or somebody quits, they don't even have that. You know, I don't think they're, they're putting the necessary things forward to make sure that they, their contract, they, you know, is obligated, they're obligated to that contract, and they feel that they're not. So, so that's the displeasure I have, is that they didn't want to work with us at all. And it wasn't just me, and it was, it was a group of us that were looking at us going, we're not, we're not getting what we want here.
I think this was obviously approved at the last meeting.
Yep.
June meeting. So I think the townspeople have expressed in approving that, that they want this service. The one-year, so I don't think there was any question that we had to extend this contract this time. That's my view anyways, because townspeople had expressed their point of view, and so we needed to extend the contract. I think what this will give us is the time that David's talking about, where we can look at alternatives, and before this contract comes up again. And hopefully, even before it makes its way into the next budget. And we can understand what our alternatives are. Who knows, perhaps we'll have a public hearing to sort of bring forward if there are alternatives, or what the status of this is. If the townspeople decide they really don't want this anymore, I guess that's, that's their choice, or if they do, we'll have to figure out what to do with it. So we're gonna go through a couple of steps here before we, you know, I think, commit to any longer term.
Did, did they even mention that perhaps they have a staffing shortage, or they gave no indication as to the whys?
No, and they, they did. I mean, obviously, we knew there was a staffing issue. The issue I had was, okay, like anybody in business, if you're gonna promote somebody out of a position, you would think you'd have somebody to follow up the position. So when they promoted our last guy, and they had nobody for us, it would, things are gonna be different. If you have a contract, you're obligated to that contract, like anybody would be. When I signed a contract to do a snowplow, I've got to do my job. And I can't just say, oh, you know what, just don't pay me for a couple of snowstorms, I'll get them the next one, so. That's what I feel is happening here. There should be some sort of backup plan before you go and promote people to other positions and leave us hanging. Now, you know, we, when we did this contract deputy back, was it 10 years ago? I think it was 10 years ago. You know, it was relatively cheap. You know, we're, I think it was $20,000 a year, we started at 20, because it was a grant.
It was a grant.
And then it went, and it gradually increased to the point where, you know, I think our part this year was $68,000 for our part. And then they pay the other part, you know, that's considerably gone, boom! And then the service for three or four months disappeared, yeah, we didn't pay for it, but we didn't get our service. So what we were trying to do is try to make your county at least be, you know, consider the idea that, you know, what are you gonna do for us when this happens again? And they're like, no, we're good, I'm gonna go back to the same contract, you, you get what you get.
Yeah, and to answer your...
Only when you contract with someone, you've got a party that is in business and wants to provide service, and you have a customer that wants that service. This feels like a one-way relationship. We want the service, and I think they, it feels like they're doing us a favor.
We want to guarantee that we get it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but it's not quite the two-party interest here that you typically